Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting and the Clay County Commission to order. We will begin with our invocation. President Rudy Garcia, if you would please come forward. And also, for your benefit and anyone else who is speaking, make sure the green light is on. State your name and then please proceed. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you. Yes, I'm Rudy Garcia and the presidency here in the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Thank you so much. Our dear Father in heaven, we are so grateful for this opportunity to gather this evening, grateful for the opportunity we have to have the freedoms that we do in this country as well as in this wonderful area here in Missouri and Clay County. We're so grateful for these leaders who sacrificed their time and their talents and their efforts to support the families and the individuals that live in this area. Father, we pray thy Spirit to be with this gathering as matters are discussed and as needs are discussed, that the topics will be in harmony with the needs of the community as well as aligned with thy will. We pray for Jerry Nolte, the presiding commissioner, as well as all the commissioners this evening, that they will feel of our gratitude for them, that they will feel of thy love for them, and that they will be strengthened and supported through their sacrifice this evening and throughout their term. Again, we pray for health and safety for each of the members in this company, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
With that, we will go to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion on the agenda for this evening's meeting? Commissioner Johnson, move to approve tonight's agenda. Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, you are recognized to close. I close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner. Motion passes six zero.
Next on our agenda are the ceremonial matters. This evening, we have three. The first one is Proclamation 2024-142, Public Services Week, which is May 11, excuse me, May 5 to 11, and that is a commission issue. I'll go ahead and give kind of the high points from this proclamation, and then we will have, who is here from the county to, ah, very good. And then we will recognize you for comments, any comments from the commission, and then we will pause a moment for pictures. This is Public Service Week, and what we're doing is celebrating, and we do this annually every week, every first week in May since 1985. Public Service Recognition Week is set aside to honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. Day in and day out, these unsung heroes provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. Without these public servants, at every level of the community, it would be impossible in a democracy to administer these elected officials. The excellence in delivery of public services helps keep Clay County strong and prosperous and a wonderful place in which to live, work, play, and volunteer. The Clay County workforce encompasses a range of skills and perspectives with employees working a variety of roles, from sworn deputies to maintenance personnel to social workers and administrative staff and countless other occupations. Therefore, we, the commissioners of Clay County, Missouri, do hereby announce and proclaim to all our citizens and set seal therefore that May 5 to 11, 2024, is Public Service Recognition Week, and we encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and the contributions of all government employees at all levels, state, federal, county, and city. And I would add particularly county because we do have an awful great staff here, and I think we, as commissioners, appreciate the hard work that is done by that staff and certainly appreciate the dedication that they display every day without fanfare, but just go about doing their duties. With that, if you'd like to make comment, please proceed.
Absolutely. Our public service employees work hard to keep our county services running smoothly, so we want to recognize them and show our appreciation. We have some great things coming up next week. This is a flyer that we have. We're going to start off the week with snack boxes. Each department is going to have a 15-minute back massage in their area throughout the week. Tuesday, we're going to have baby goat cuddling up here at the admin building between 11 and 2, if you guys need some goat cuddling. Then the taco bar is provided by Hy-Vee in different areas throughout the week. And on Friday, we're going to end up the week with the Kansas City Whip truck out on this side of the building, and we're going to have some music from 2 to 4. And we also have daily drawings. We have lots of items that were donated by vendors and by local businesses. We have zoo tickets, B&amp;B Theater tickets. We have one-hour golf passes to tee shots. We have four of those. We have Powell Garden tickets. We have $100 gift card to Chicken and Pickle. Liberty Community Center donated a 20 Swipe Pass. We have a half-day pontoon rental at Smithville Lake, and we have a Texas Roadhouse gift basket. So it's going to be, we're going to have a daily drawing every day, and we'll put it, a video out showing who won the items. So we've got 556 employees, and we've got 21 items to give away, but everybody's going to have a good week. And we're closed on Wednesday for Truman's birthday, so.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments? Would any commissioners care to comment? Commissioner Wagner, let me get you that. Okay. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't think they make enough tacos, and they probably don't have enough goats to properly thank all of you who work for this county. You do a lot. You're unsung many times. These are great opportunities to bring some light on what you do, but I just want you to know that if they could do that every week, it would be well deserved because you all do deserve it. And finally, I'll just say, if you can find a goat that can come an occasional Thursday evening, it may be needed.
I'll work on it.
But all kidding aside, thank you, and thank all of you for what you do for this county.
Don't I count as an old goat?
I wasn't governor there.
Please do not. Any other commissioners have any comments or things that they would like to say? With that then, unless there's anything else that you'd like to add, we will go ahead and pause for a moment, and I will present the proclamation to you.
No, just thank you very much. We appreciate it, and everything that you guys do for the employees, we appreciate it.
Okay. Next on our agenda, under ceremonial matters, is Honorary Resolution for Historic Preservation Month, which is May 2024. This item was brought forth by Commissioner Withington. Commissioner, you have the floor.
All right. So it says, "Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973, as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation; and whereas Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of local historical significant buildings, landmarks, and records for the residents of Clay County; and whereas local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds; and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people; and whereas the Clay County Commission wishes to recognize the dedication of those who worked tirelessly to preserve our rich history; and now therefore let it be proclaimed by the Clay County Commissioners the month of May 2024 as National Preservation Month in Clay County, and call upon all residents of Clay County to join their fellow citizens across the United States in celebrating the historic resources within our county and increasingly public awareness of the importance of historic preservation." So I just want to say thank you to everybody that came tonight. I invited every historical society and organization in the county to be here. Not all of them were able to make it, but, you know, I really appreciate what you guys do. As Clay County has grown, a lot of our historical sites have been demolished and, you know, a lot of the neighborhoods have been destroyed, you know, Nashua, Harlem, stuff like, you know, neighborhoods like that, they're just gone, you know? No one knows they were even there. So, you know, I really appreciate everything you guys have done. I've made a promise to a lady in 2004 when she was dying that I would help preserve the history of Harlem, and I take that very serious. And I know that, you know, over the years, I've given the Clay County Archives a lot of historical data on Harlem, and over the last, within the last month, the Harlem Church was torn down, and I was able to save all the stained glass windows, and I presented it, so I gave the top half to the Clay County Historical Society Museum across the street, and I gave the bottom half of one of the windows to the North Kansas City Historical Society. And next week, I'll be giving the Clay County Archives more papers on the history of Harlem. So, yeah, I'm just really happy that you guys are here, and I really appreciate what you guys do to keep our history and heritage documented. So thank you guys for coming.
Would anybody care to come up who is a member of one of those societies and speak, and then I will go to commission comments. And please remember to have the green light on, press the button, and identify yourselves before making comment.
Hi, I'm Valerie Swerengen from North Kansas City, and I'm the newly appointed president of the North Kansas City Historical Society. I took it over about a year ago, trying to bring it back up to what it has been in years past. So it's been a great learning to figure out. I live in North Town. I love everything about North Town. It's been fun listening to Commissioner Withington's input on everything that's going on, and I just want it to last. You know, it's okay if we change, but I don't want people to forget what we were in the beginning, so that's kind of my goal. Purely volunteer. I love it and want to get it staying where it should be.
And as the next person's making her way up, if you want to stand behind her, that way I can get an idea and make sure that I'm moving everybody along. I don't want to cut it off if someone else cares to comment. Please proceed. Oh, the, yeah.
Thank you for the invitation to receive this proclamation this evening. My name is Denise Rieminger. I'm the president at the Clay County Museum and Historical Society, and it is an honor to have received the window from the Harlem Church. It will be on display, I believe it is already on display by our curator, Cherry Holtman. We have several of our members here this evening, and we appreciate being recognized for parliamentary, or for Preservation Month, forget the parliamentary, Megan, for Preservation Month at the Clay County Museum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tony Myers. I'm the president of the Clay County Archives and Historical Library here in Liberty. Thank you so very much for this recognition. I feel honored with our peer groups here in Clay County to serve the community. We appreciate the recognition, the feedback encourages us to keep working on the behalf of the citizens in this area. Thank you so very much.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this before we go to commission comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Lawson, I believe you are seeking recognition.
Thank you very much. You know, our history is still very important to us. Years ago, I moved to Carney because of Jesse James. There was a big Jesse James festival that we always held in Carney. Back in the 70s, we brought our family to the Carney area because of that. Immediately, we took our son out and showed him Jesse James' birthplace. We continue to do that with our granddaughter and now our great-granddaughter and take them out there. People talk about, long ago, probably in the 80s, there was a movement to get rid of that farm, and they were saying, well, he was an outlaw, and he was this, and he was that. Much like many other historical sites, whether there are good things or bad things happened, as they always say, if you don't preserve history and the good as well as the bad, you're going to repeat it. It could be repeated again. So the fact that all of you are so dedicated to our historical background, I think it's imperative that we fight to hold on to all of that, we preserve it, and we cherish it. So thank you very, very much for what you do. It's a thankless job, I'm sure, at times, but we appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. As you all were coming forward and the comments were made, it reminded me of a gentleman who some of you may remember, Keith Nelson. I was on the council in Kansas City when Keith championed, and I think even posthumously still champions, the Shoto Fountain. It's just statues so far, but we hope to see a fountain one day. And I remember how tireless he was in telling his story, and you've all heard it, so I won't, unless you really want to hear it. No, you don't want to hear it. But I think of Keith when you come here today because Keith was a champion of Clay County history. And champions are necessary so that people don't forget what has occurred. And I'm an old, one of my majors was in history here at William Jewell, just right down the street, another historic location, by the way, as you all know. But it takes individuals willing to make sure the story is told, because if they don't champion those stories now, who will? And when the next story needs to be remembered and told, there will be no one there to do it. So I appreciate you being the custodians of that history, and just as Keith was in his time and you are now. And I hope that there are those that you will encounter who will be just as excited about those stories and be the next custodians. And if this is one way that we can recognize that, then that's great. But thank you all for what you do to keep the history of Clay County alive. My best to you as you continue to do so. Thank you. Thank you.
And I think the entire commission wants to extend their thanks to you folks who are doing so much to preserve our history. Often, once history is gone, it is completely gone. And the fact that you've dedicated yourselves in the same way that Keith dedicated himself not only to preserving our history, but creating a monument so that that remembrance would have a renewed effect, I think is a wonderful thing, and it's indicative, I think, of the respect that we paid to those who came before us. So thank you very much for being essentially the repository of many of our community memories. That's a great mission, and we certainly appreciate those of you who do that. Unless there are any further comments, we will go ahead and take a few pictures on that. Sorry, Commissioner Withington, you wanted to say something else?
Keith was also a big champion of the Clay County Archives, who's here tonight, too.
I'm not sure there was anything had to do with that particular subject. He was not a champion of. He was, as Commissioner Wagner was saying, tireless. He was older than myself, and I couldn't keep up with him. So there we go. He was the Energizer Bunny of historical preservation. With that, unless there's further comment, I will go ahead and assemble for a picture any of the individuals here who would like to come up and also be here. We'll see if we can kind of scrunch everybody in. Okay. And by the way, those of you who are here for these different presentations, certainly I realize you may have other places to be, but do feel free to be here for the entire meeting if you so choose, and also you're very welcome to be here at any future meetings. Don't feel as though we're rushing you out the door or anything. We're happy to have you here, anytime. Okay. With that, we have yet another Commissioner Withington, Honorary Resolution for Medical Health Awareness Month, which once again is May 2024. Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
All right. So whereas mental health is a leading cause of disability in the United States, impacting nearly one in five adults and one in 13 children, and whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience time of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention and the stigma reduction are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in Missouri and Clay County, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives; and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health and has the responsibility to promote mental health, wellness, and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, the Clay County Board of County Commissioners calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Clay County to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, reducing the stigma of mental illness, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Having duly met at the regular meeting to consider this matter, the Clay County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. So I just want to say, you know, this is something I'm pretty passionate about. You know, I've been open with, everybody up here pretty much knows, I've been battling anxiety and depression my entire life, you know? And last year, we had two kids from my high school graduating class who committed suicide because of depression. So, you know, if you struggle with mental illness, just know that you're not alone. Like I said, you know, I've been battling anxiety and depression my entire life, and what I remember when I ran for office two years ago, I made a post about my anxiety and depression, and I had a lot of people tell me, oh, you're screwing up by posting that because, you know, it could be used against you. But, you know, I don't care. The only way we're going to ever break the stigma of mental health is to talk about it. So, you know, and talking about mental health isn't shameful, it's not attention-seeking, it's nothing to apologize for either, you know? It's powerful, you know, it's honest, and, you know, it can change lives and it can help people. After telling people, you know, about my story about it, you know, other people have messaged me saying, hey, you know, I've been struggling with it too. So, you know, I just want to thank you guys for everything you do over at Tri-County and everything. I guess you changed your name, but, you know, so everything you guys do to help, you know, like I said, it's something I'm passionate about, and, you know, we need to talk about it to break the stigma. So thank you for coming tonight.
Please make sure, yeah, the microphone is on, and proceed.
All right. Thank you. I'm Tom Patrizzo. I'm the CEO at Beacon Mental Health, formerly Tri-County Mental Health, and we are the largest mental health provider here in the Northland. We're the safety net behavioral health provider here, serve over 9,000 people in the Northland. That's Clay, Platte, Ray counties in any year. And we serve people as young as six years old, children as young as six, all the way up to senior citizens. So folks that may have either a mental health or substance use challenge, we're there to provide treatment. And then, as Commissioner Withington mentioned, we're also available for prevention. So we have prevention teams and coalitions all out throughout the county, this county, Platte and Ray as well, where they're working with schools, health departments, law enforcement to do a variety of campaigns around suicide prevention, promoting healthy behaviors, you know, battling the, whatever I'd call it, the stigma and the struggles that young people encounter, particularly on social media and other places that exacerbate their depression or anxiety. So we're there, available as a frontline mental health provider as well as a prevention team. And some of the prevention things we do, which I'll mention, are, we do have programs like Mental Health First Aid, which is like regular first aid. It's for laypeople to help them better identify a peer or colleague or a friend who may be struggling with a mental health challenge, and then how to approach that person in a non-defensive, non-intrusive way to talk about, you know, maybe they need to get some help. So I appreciate, Jason, what you were bringing up about that, just being open about it and being able to talk to folks about what they might be experiencing. So Mental Health First Aid is one. We also do another training called QPR, which is Question, Persuade, Refer, similar, but it's around suicide prevention, helping somebody understand the risks of suicide and then refer them potentially to help or assistance. And then lastly, I'd mention 988. You may have seen some of the billboards on Interstate 29, Interstate 35. 988 started 18 months ago. It's a national mental health hotline. Anybody can call it, text it. There's a call center in central Kansas City that serves our area that we partner with on 988. So it's a great resource. You don't have to be at risk of suicide to call 988. Folks call just to get information, just to kind of explore, you know, if a loved one's struggling, what they might do, what they might be able to do to help that person. And when you call 988, you're going to get a trained mental health clinician, like a master's level trained clinician, to help you on, over the phone or texting. So a great resource to have available now nationally, and that kind of goes in line with, you know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, to have something national that's available as a resource, really great. So just to mention those things. The other thing I would say, just locally in Clay County, Beacon, we do a lot to try to be present in the community. We have clinicians available in over 70 schools in Clay County, so we're trying to be present in the schools. We also have clinicians available to law enforcement, to the sheriff and the jail here in Clay County, and we also have a clinician based at the Clay County Health Department. So those are all mental health-trained professionals that are available in your local community to help partner with other folks who are doing work right to help partner with other folks who are doing work right, you know, right on the ground in the community. So we're available then to help them if they encounter someone that has a mental health challenge. So, yeah.
Before I go to Commissioner Carpenter, I would like you to, if you wouldn't mind, both now and then maybe once we've concluded, any commissioner comments, could you give us website, regular telephone? So if someone watching or is going over the recording of this meeting, they will have the information at hand on how to reach out to you folks.
Yeah. So our website or URL is beaconmh.org. So beaconmh.org. So beaconmentalhealth.org. And there's a bunch of resources there. And the other thing I'd mention, too, is at Beacon, you can walk in on any weekday to have an assessment done. You don't need an appointment. So between 8:30 and 1:30, 8:30 in the morning and 1:30 in the afternoon, any weekday, you can walk in. You may have to wait a little while, but you can walk in. So what I try to tell people, if you have a loved one or a friend that's struggling, if you could just get them to come in to the walk-in, we will try to figure out a plan for that person. And it may not be Beacon, but we know the resources. We know, you know, what's available in the community that might be helpful. So I always encourage people to try to come in with that walk-in. And you could find out more about that at beaconmh.org.
And what is the location of your walk-in location?
3100 Northeast 83rd Street. So we're right over here at the, on the Community College campus, Maple Woods Community College. We own the building, though, that we occupy there on the campus. And it does say Beacon Mental Health right out in front. So, yeah, that's the location for the walk-in. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thanks, Commissioner. First, I just want to say thanks to you, Tom. I know you've been doing this. How long have you been at Tri-County now?
Just over 10 years now.
Okay, yeah. Well, you have my sincere gratitude. You know, I recall many conversations with you back during my time in the State House. I know you've been working hard on this issue. And one of the things that's happened over that time, unfortunately, is that, you know, a lot of these issues have sort of gotten worse.
Yes.
Both on the substance abuse side and on some of the mental health statistics. And so we know that the need is greater than ever. I, growing up, grew up with a brother who had substance abuse and mental health challenges for a number of years, took a massive impact on my family. He ended up taking his own life.
I'm sorry.
And one of the things that we experienced, and really my parents experienced, was the struggle with finding adequate resources and help. And this was, gosh, almost 20 years ago now. But it's why I'm very grateful to you and the work that you do there at Beacon. One request that I have of you is, you know, we know that there's more that we ought to be doing at the societal level to address this issue. The fact that it's getting worse is a pretty good sign of that, in my view. And obviously, there's a lot of confounding factors there, you know, technological things like social media that are obviously making things worse.
Yes.
But all the more reason to double down on figuring out constructive solutions and working together. So request of you would be to stay in touch with us. And, you know, it's one thing for us to, and you have my sincere gratitude to Commissioner Withington, and I totally agree with what you're saying in terms of breaking the stigma by, you know, talking about it in public. But if we can do more than just, you know, an awareness recognition, take steps to meaningfully help you in your mission, certainly you'd have my support in that regard and would love to hear from you in terms of any kind of specific actions that we could take. So, and I don't mean at this moment. I'm just being, you know, over.
No, I know. I know. A lot of things come to mind, but.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I, you know, say it to you now, which is, you know, you've been doing it, you're in the space, and, you know, you have some expertise, obviously. So you might be able to guide us in ways that we can be helpful.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And, yeah, appreciate you being here. And thanks to Jason.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, sir. So I'm of the personal opinion that one of the biggest challenges I think society faces is dealing with mentally ill. I think it's something that we haven't mastered yet, obviously by the suicides that we just talked about tonight, and there's millions more. It's a difficult and challenging issue to deal with.
Correct.
And those who've worked law enforcement for a length of time would probably agree with that. I saw it firsthand, and a lot of people have lived it with family members that have been, particularly in crisis mode, and those that are severely impacted. But recently, my wife and I were helping a friend of ours that had some mental challenges, mental illness, depression and anxiety that got really bad. I mean, really bad, to the point where we thought he was a danger to himself, would probably hurt himself, maybe commit suicide. And so my wife felt the need to actually call 911. And this was just recently, and called the Sheriff's Department. And a couple of deputies showed up. And having been in law enforcement, I'll tell you, most people don't sign up to be police officers or deputies to deal with the mental ill. They want to put bad people in jail. And these aren't bad people. These are bad people with a challenge that's so hard to deal with. And a couple of deputies showed up that I talked to myself, they had no idea who I was, Deputy Dobbs and Horn, by the way, who did outstanding, outstanding job. I asked my wife later, I said, "How was the dispatcher when you called the dispatcher?" She said, "The dispatcher's the most compassionate, sweetest thing in the world." I was so happy to hear that. And then I asked the person who I called, who she called on, who Deputy Dobbs dealt with, and this person said Deputy Dobbs was the greatest. The way she handled it, and the way she handled this person who is in a major crisis was just outstanding. I'd spent several hours, my wife and I both spent several hours on the phone and in person down at Beacon Mental Health, talking with Mark. Mark did an outstanding job.
He's one of our crisis workers.
He did a great job.
Thank you.
He did a great job. I was really happy, and we called him a few times, just looking for help. And like was mentioned, there's a lot more that we could do. And it has an impact on so many people, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's family members who are impacted, and those who don't have the ability to deal with it. Most families don't. I mean, it's just, you can't make sense out of it sometimes. And it's such a challenging thing to do. And so, first of all, I want to say thank you to the people who did help my wife in that situation. But additionally, just, I've become more and more aware of how difficult that challenge is as a society, and how there's, there needs to be more done. I don't know what the solution is, but we need to do more. And when you look at most of the challenges we have out in society, whether it's the homeless issue, or a lot of those things revolve around the mental stability of people and those challenges they have, and the chemical imbalances, for whatever reason, that are taking place, and why science hasn't been able to figure it out a little better, I'm getting a little bit disappointed. But it's a challenge, and it's a challenge that's affecting the world.
Yep.
That I think we need to put a lot more into, a lot more time, a lot more money, a lot more science into figuring out, how do we deal with this? Because we can do better. We're losing. Just the fact that the people are still committing suicide, we're losing, even with the great work that you guys are doing. So I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Keep going. And if there's anything that the commission can do to help, please let us know. But I'm in full support and think that we can, if there's anything more that we can do, we should do it. So, thank you, though.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, can I just make a couple of comments about that?
Please, go ahead.
You know, I think, one, you hit upon something, Commissioner Johnson, about just the complexity and the difficulty of a deep mental health challenge, like when somebody's really struggling with a deep depression. And it's hard to get that person to take the action, perhaps, to get the support they need. That's really hard. And it's complex because it could be a combination of a biological factor and external, you know, the nature, nurture, that we call it. That's really complex. And if, you know, one thing, I'm not a physician, but getting that person in front of the physician is the first step to trying to sort that out, whether it is more biological versus external forces. Yeah. Yeah, really hard one. And then the other thing I would mention to folks as a practical thing, if you do call law enforcement because you have a loved one that's struggling or a friend with a mental health challenge, one thing you could do is ask for a CIT-trained officer. I don't know if Officer Dobbs was CIT-trained, hopefully. That's Crisis Intervention Training. It's a national training that law enforcement goes through. We offer it at Beacon. Peggy Gornfloh is the manager that handles that with law enforcement for us. A CIT-trained officer will be better equipped to intervene with somebody that's struggling with a mental health challenge. And there's lots of research that shows the outcomes are better, there's less injury, less hands-on, less, and a better outcome for the person, the potential client, as well as the law enforcement officer. Yeah. So anyway, just mention that.
Commissioner Lawson.
Thank you. You know, I really appreciate Commissioner Withington bringing this forward. I will never forget the first time, one of the first times I met him, we were at a candidate forum, and he brought that issue forward and said, "You know, I suffer, I know what it's like. I suffer from depression." And he went on to elaborate a little, and I thought, geez, I don't know if this guy is going to be able to handle the job, number one, you know? But the great thing about it was, he wasn't afraid to bring that forward. And I think oftentimes in the past, people have been so cautious about saying, "Ooh, we don't want to let anybody know that, you know, she's having," my sister or whomever, "are having problems. That's something we got to keep in the family." No, it's really something that we need to seek help for. So I really applaud him, number one, for bringing this forward, but secondly, for being willing to talk about the problem openly, and certainly hasn't hurt him and the job he's doing. So we appreciate so much what you do for the people of Clay County, and I'm in total support to support you in any way that we possibly can. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I think one of the things I'd like to add, and just to make sure that I'm on the right track here, but like any other condition, certainly the earlier a condition is identified and treatment can start, the easier the recovery is. So I don't think it's too much to urge that those who are having difficulties try to get, try to get the proper treatment, the proper attention before it gets any worse, like anything else. The road to recovery is much longer if you put it off indefinitely.
That is correct.
And once again, before we pause for, you know, the photographs and the presentation of the proclamation, could you go ahead and repeat the contact information one more time in the interest of anyone who feels as though they should seek you out for your professional services?
So the website is beaconmh.org. So that's B-E-A-C-O-N-M-H.org. And then the location for the walk-in assessments is 3100 Northeast 83rd Street, Kansas City, Missouri, right here in Clay County. Yeah. The main location.
Was there anyone else who cared to speak on this issue before we concluded? Commissioner Withington, since this is your issue, if you'd like to have any closing remarks, you are certainly recognized to do so.
No, I'm good. Thank you for everything you do.
I thank you.
Okay. With that, we will pause for a moment, do that, and then when we return, we will take up the next item under our agenda. All right. Well, that concludes our ceremonial matters and this evening's agenda. What next on our agenda? Our public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any issues that are of importance to them? Okay, I see no one coming forward for public comments. That will bring us to our consent agenda. Should I call you Administrator or Administrator Pro Tem for the day?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are five items on the consent agenda tonight. The commission meeting minutes from April 18th, 2024. 2024-139, approve invoice payments for Clay County for the period of April 20th, 2024 to April 26th, 2024. There are 252 invoices for a total of $701,110.86. 2024-147, approve transfer within a fund. And 2024 contract for microseal and chipseal, Vance Brothers Highway. 2024-148, approve contract for 2024 county road resurfacing, Superior Bowen Highway. 2024-149, approve capital project encumbrance request and purchase and lease of two steel wheel rollers, Murphy Tractor and Equipment County, in the amount of $327.12. That didn't make sense.
Thank you. Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda, Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2024-145. Please proceed.
Resolution 2024-145, approve the retirement of K-9 Chibi and transfer of ownership to Corporal Andrew Ignatenko. And here to present that is Captain Agderian.
Thank you, Captain. Make sure the mic is on, and please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This request for action is kind of near and dear to my heart, and he's sitting down, but I'm going to introduce him to you in a minute and give him an opportunity to say anything if he'd like. But my friend Corporal Ignatenko resigned from the sheriff's office, and we wish him well in his endeavors with his new agency. And I have a special place in my heart for Corporal Iggy, as we call him, because he's one of the only people who could pronounce my name entirely accurately without being told how to pronounce it. So that's kind of important to me. So K-9 Chibi is a Dutch shepherd, and he came into service with us. And I'm going to put his picture up on the board. I think, I'm not quite sure how to work this. We do computer presentation. There we go. So Chibi could not be with us tonight because Corporal Ignatenko was working tonight and didn't have time to get Chibi and bring him to the meeting tonight. And I know several of you are upset about that. But Chibi is a Dutch shepherd that came into service in 2020. He has recertified with the North American Police Work Dog Association five, well, four times, the initial certification, and then he recertified four times. He's been deployed over 500 times to locate narcotics and money associated with narcotics. He's a very good boy. With the passage of Amendment 3 in 2022, Chibi was retired because Chibi was one of our dogs that was trained to detect marijuana, which we no longer really had a use for. So Chibi was retired from service. Around that time, Iggy transferred from investigations to the School Resource Unit, which gave us a really cool opportunity to put Chibi back in service in the school district with his new SRD handler. And, you know, marijuana is still illegal in schools, so Chibi had a purpose again. But with Iggy's resignation from the sheriff's office, and given that Chibi is trained in a substance that we can't really use him in the field for, for detection.
Yeah, that was kind of where I was going, was that you kind of think in terms of a traditional German Shepherd type of a canine, so has a different and distinctive look, very nice, very attractive.
He looks like a little tiger.
I was thinking that the coloration did kind of remind me of that. With that, Commissioner Withington, you were seeking, oh, hold on a moment, you were seeking recognition. There we go.
I just want to say thank you, Iggy, for everything you've done. You know, I've been able to get to know you over the last couple of years, we've built a friendship. And, you know, not only am I disappointed in Brink Chibi, disappointed in your go-to of Platte County, I wish you'd stay. I told Will to back up the Brink's truck and give you whatever it takes to get you to stay. But, you know, I thank you for everything you've done, you know. I was reading about Chibi again, and she found over a million dollars in drug money, which was cool. But then I remembered, you guys went viral last year, and over nine million people saw a video of she being you, and Chibi won that one. So hopefully, hopefully he takes it easy on you in retirement. But, yeah, just thanks for your friendship, man, and thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you, means a lot to me. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, you were seeking recognition? Hold on a moment. I'm sorry. There we go. My thumbs are a little fat again. Thank you, sir. So I've never been a canine handler, but I did manage the canine unit. We had 12 dogs plus two bloodhounds, the one I managed. And I got to watch the relationship and the camaraderie, the connection that was built between the handler and the dog, with so much that they go through, not only through training, but actually on-the-job stuff. So I appreciate what you do, I appreciate that relationship that you have, and I'm more than happy to approve this and let you take this dog with you. Sounds like you're going to Platte County?
Yes, I'm in Platte County now, yes.
Why? You don't have to answer.
Buttercruising.
But we appreciate your service here as well, but, no, I appreciate, I understand a little bit, I think, what handlers go through and the work they do with their dogs, and what a valuable tool the dog and the handler together are for law enforcement. And so just thank you for you and your service, you and your dog for the service that you guys have provided Clay County. Thank you. Commissioner, did you want to make a motion, as long as you had the microphone? There were no other comments, but?
Yes, sir. I move to approve 2024-145.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-145. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. We certainly can. We can pause for a moment and do that. All I can say is, after we had Snow here the last time, and I said Snow had no comments, he had comments, so a little apprehensive about, you know, whenever we have a dog now, so I wasn't sure what to make of it. Next on our regular agenda is 2024-140. Please proceed.
Resolution 2024-140, approve invoice payments for Clay County Prosecutor's Office for the period of April 20th, 2024 to April 26th, 2024. There are 11 invoices for a total of $4,958.11.
Excuse me. Is there a motion on 2024-140, Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-140.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-140. Any discussion or comment? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. We certainly can. We can pause for a moment and do that. All I can say is, after we had Snow here the last time, and I said Snow had no comments, he had comments, so a little apprehensive about, you know, whenever we have a dog now, so I wasn't sure what to make of it. Next on our regular agenda is 2024-140. Please proceed.
Resolution 2024-140, approve invoice payments for Clay County Prosecutor's Office for the period of April 20th, 2024 to April 26th, 2024. There are 11 invoices for a total of $4,958.11.
Excuse me. Is there a motion on 2024-140, Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-140.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-140. Any discussion or comment? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Motion passes five in favor, one recusal.
Thank you. That brings us to the final item on this evening's regular agenda, that would be 2024-141. Please proceed.
Resolution 2024-141, approve IFB number 23 and 24 of the Rotus Farm agricultural lease, Jesse James birthplace, Claybrook Farms. And here to talk about that resolution is Intram Parks Director John Davis.
Please proceed.
John Davis, Intram Parks Director. This year, we requested to go out for invitation for bid for agricultural hay lease for 14 and a half acres at the Jesse James Farm and Claybrook Park. This is similar to what other agricultural parcels we have. We've had some operating changes. Eastern Parks has taken on mowing of the airport, so this has frees some of their time up and also give us a little bit of income. This was put out for 30 days. We sent out information to three potential bidders. There were 10 people that, or 10 bidders that accessed the online public purchase and demand star. We ended up with one bid, Mr. Harold Rotus. This is a one-year contract with five renewals, at $45 an acre, for a total of $652.50 a year. You have any questions?
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2024-141, Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-141.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-141. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Motion passes six-zero.
That concludes this evening's regular agenda. Next is county administrator comments. Are there any comments to be made?
Yes. Thank you for your patience, first of all. But I'd like to remind everybody that all county offices will be closed on next Wednesday, May 8th, in observance of Truman's birthday. And then our next regular business session is May 9th, here in the county commission room at 6:00 PM.
Very good. Thank you. Next, our commissioner comments. Commissioner Lawson, we will start with you, if you'd like. Do you have any comments that you'd care to make?
So much.
Oh, I didn't, I said that, and then I realized you'd pushed your button. It's just magical some days, isn't it? Please proceed.
Great. First of all, thank you, Harry, for that day off. That's great. He was quite a gentleman. I didn't know him personally, but he was. He was, he was a no-nonsense guy, so thanks for the day off, Harry. Another thing, this morning I had one of the most wonderful experiences I've had since becoming a commissioner. I went to the prayer breakfast at Excelsior Springs. It was fantastic. It was in their big banquet hall, and there was not a chair left to be had. It was packed. They had a fantastic speaker that spoke about a really difficult time he had, and how his religion had pulled him through, and how he felt, you know, God's hand, and how he was cured, and it was a wonderful program. We had the chorus from the high school came and sang the National Anthem, which was wonderful. They even had a color guard there. It just was emotionally and religiously, it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful experience. And I look forward to it next year, just a wonderful thing. The other thing I want to say is not so pleasant, nothing horribly negative, but I want to say that after I thought about last week's meeting, and what I felt was the reception to the documents that I brought forward, not that my document was perfect, I'm not saying that, but I'm, I'm thinking that we needed to take some kind of action. And while there were a lot of things said pro and con, it was kind of like, well, we don't like either of these, but nobody stepped up to the plate and said, hey, let me work on this this week, let's try to pull these together, let's try to come up with something that everybody will appreciate, and some action that needs to be taken. I know that there's a bill that's pending that will address this issue down in Jeff City, but I would like to see us, if we do nothing more than say, that we're going to abide by the regulations that the state has, and, you know, that this is how the county feels about this issue. Illegal immigration is, I think, one of the biggest negatives this country has had to face in the last few years. The diseases, the revenues that are going there to people that did an illegal act, didn't come here the right way, all that money spent that could have been spent on our own people, our homeless, our veterans, people, young people that want to go to school, kids that don't have enough to eat. We've got more than enough stuff in this country to take care of, and I felt that I would have liked to have seen this body react in a different manner. So for this week, I'd like people to think about that a little bit. What can we do to pull together as a team and come up with a document that will say how this county feels? We don't have to have, Commissioner Withington came up with a good idea, let's talk to all the cities. Well, you know, the people of Clay County put us into office. We're supposed to be making decisions. That's what they put us here for. Let's make the damn decisions and not worry about all the towns. They sure don't call us every time they want to do something. And while I want a consensus, still, they're citizens that we represent. So I'd like for us to do something, maybe that will bring both sides together, but something, let's take some action. Let's, don't wait until we're inundated and we're spending money like it's water, and there's all kinds of difficulty, crime, whatever it may be. Let's do something now, as a body, and then see where that takes us down the road. So I just ask it for your indulgence, let's look at it, and let's make some decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Withington? There you go.
I wasn't going to make any comments, I thought I talked enough, but, and I'm not trying to have a discussion, so I'm just going to make a comment. I was pretty clear last week that I didn't think the county commission set immigration policy, that that was at the state and federal level. So I stand by my position last week. If we are going to do anything, I think that we should pass a resolution that simply says that we encourage state, any city, village, or municipality in Clay County to follow current state and federal laws with regards to immigration. So, again, not trying to have a discussion, just restating my, my position, and that's where I'm at.
By the way, Commissioner, the opinion of the chair is that you're having parallel comments, or there's not a discussion taking place, so you are in order. Commissioner Carpenter?
No comment.
Commissioner Thompson?
No comment.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner With- all right, it falls to me to extend this into an insane period of time. No. Something that I have observed, and there have been a lot of different issues that we've brought up before this commission, and it's a point of pride, I think, and that is, we, as a commission, have gotten along extremely well in recent years, and I think that is in contrast, I don't believe I will name names, but other levels of government seem to be functioning at a less productive level than the county is at the moment. And I want to say that that is due in very large part to the commissioners that you see up here before you right now, as well as the support and the hard work of the staff. I think it's, we will be acknowledged if we stray, and we do end up being into some conflict, that's inevitable, but I think it's important to point out that when we function in a way that is professional and efficient, I think it needs to be acknowledged, and the people in this room and at this dais certainly contribute mightily to that, to that new way we have of operating. With that, that concludes commissioner comments. We are adjourned.